Testing. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you for being here this evening. Want to welcome you. We want to start right on time. There's a lot to share tonight and we also want to have time for questions and answers. How this will work is there'll be two presentations. The second will be fairly short. What I'll ask is if you could write down your questions, it will work a lot better if we can have both presentations and then have the question and answer time. So at this time, I'd like us to begin with prayer and if you'd bow your heads with me. Lord, it's good to be in your house, but we're sorry for the reason why. Your Holy Spirit would bless us with presence, with wisdom, discernment, and peace. And I want to ask that you would guide through this time and you would be with us and that your will would be done. This is my prayer. In Jesus' name, amen. It was the last week of August on a Monday evening and it was late at night. I remember the next day would be the first constituency or the executive committee of the new constituents had been elected in May. And I got a call from our principal at Mount Vernon Academy. And this is the beginning of how we're here this evening. He said, "We're not able to make payroll this Thursday." That was on a Monday evening. I think it was August 25. And the next morning, we were going to have finance and then later that day, executive committee. And I said, "How much do you think we'll need?" And well, first I said, "The first payroll." That taught me. I've been around schools all of my ministry. The first payroll is usually your easiest to do. And he said, "Yes, the first payroll." I asked, "How much do you need?" And he said, "Sixty-eight thousand." And when he said that, that hit pretty hard because I know the state of the conference right now pretty intimately. And it surprised me. The next day, we gathered at the conference finance committee. And I didn't know that I'd be thinking that sixty-eight thousand would sound like a very nice number because the next day, as people started pushing buttons on calculators and stuff, the number grew by a huge amount. So since then, we've been learning as much as we can. We've had a GCAS, our general conference audit. We had another specially called committee with our executive committee and with the Board of Trustees for the academy. And from that, we had decided that we need to have town halls and then in January 11, have a constituency meeting, which would be here at Worthington. And if weather doesn't permit, it would turn to January 25. Tonight, you're going to see the fruits of a lot of labor that has been done since that initial phone call. And you'll learn a lot, not just about our situation at Mount Vernon. I think it's important, I think probably many of you understand this, that the story we have at Mount Vernon is being replayed all over the country when it comes to boarding academies. I don't know if we'll have a slide this evening, but 170 of our schools have closed in the last, was that since 2007? At North American Division Committee, this fall, the year-end committee, that was talked about. You'll see some other statistics having to do with our Adventist church population, the aging of it. The average age is 57 in America right now of a Seventh-day Adventist. You'll see, and it's already, I'm going to give them a little this so you can hear it again because it's stunning. Twenty-seven percent of the Adventist population in North America have children of school age. And only 30% of that 27% have children in our schools. What has happened basically is with the aging of our church, far fewer students to draw from. The North American Division has found that we actually still have about the same percentage of our students coming from our families as we used to back when I was in academy, which was the boom age for academies. It's just that the pool of student-age children that are Adventists has gone from being a good-sized lake to a small pond. There are many things that are involved in this. You're going to be learning a lot tonight. We're going to be talking together. We're going to be sharing. And may God bless us and may he be with us and may we be with him through this. I'm going to ask our finance chair to come. One, two of the things that took place was that first, we had that combined meeting of the Board of Trustees along with the executive committee. From that, a Blue Ribbon Committee was established from, we had Ham Canosa, who's our education director for the union. We had Seth Bardou, who is the treasurer of our union. We had people from our executive committee and people from Mount Vernon Academy Board that made up a committee that has done a great deal of research for us. Vince is going to share a very streamlined portion of that tonight. At the Board of Trustees on Monday night, the meeting went a little over five hours. It was very in-depth. The meeting yesterday, was it yesterday? Day before. I'm running through many meetings. It was Board of Education yesterday. The meeting the day before, it also went, five hours. The day of constituency, the reports will be given in absolute detail. You will see all the slides that we saw. But since we meet at seven o'clock at night, we are going to do our best to give these reports and still allow time for conversation. And what I believe we should do after that is as we go home, these next days and weeks and months, we need to be earnestly in prayer about the upcoming constituency. So Vince, thank you again. When I came, I said, "I'm going to be a new president." They looked at me and they said, and I said, "We have a constituency meeting in May." They all go, "Oh, you poor guy." And they had no clue I'd have two within, what, nine months or so. So it's hard to believe we're doing town halls again, but here's a great opportunity for us to come together to learn facts and to be prayerful.
Well, good evening, everyone. I was going to ask for a vote if you wanted the five-hour presentation or the 45-minute, but Ron has already stated we're doing the streamlined version, which is happy with me. Obviously, the topic is about Mount Vernon Academy. And as we've gone through these different meetings and presentations, there are feelings about this all over the board. There's emotions. There's just a lot of, lot of pieces of this and trying to wrap our minds around this. And Ron has already shared a little bit with you, but I just want to state again that, you know, as we leave this room and you'll be talking with other people, I really ask that as much as possible, try to keep the bias and the opinion out of what you might say to someone else. We've got, we've got to try to stay as close to the facts as we possibly can. And we've worked really hard trying to put the facts together and keep the bias out of this. The Blue Ribbon Committee, and it was made up of two members of the MVA Board, four from the executive committee, Seth Bardou, the union treasurer, Dr. Ham Canosa, Vice President of Education for the union, and myself. I chair the finance committee. Not an employee. I think I've shared that with you before in other town hall meetings. I'm a layperson like you. And I'm on, but as we, then you see the names there. Jim Fortner. Any of the members from that committee here this evening? Anthony, Anthony's here. And who's back there?
Jerry's here.
And Jerry and Jim. We had, a week ago, this past Sunday, the Blue Ribbon Committee camped out in the garden room from 10:00 in the morning till shortly after 5:00 on that Sunday. As we went through all this information, we've had some teleconferences, a lot of time from the Blue Ribbon Committee gathering all the data. We established our mandate that was given to us, which was to collect and review the financial, the enrollment, and the campus life information relating to MVA. And we have reams of paper of information about this. We were asked to explore the long-term and the short-term viability of the academy. And then to report this to the Board of Trustees and on to the Conference Executive Committee. I want to talk a little bit about the data collection process. And the first item on there is the individual interviews that Ham Canosa did with the faculty at the academy. Those interviews were set up for 20, 25 minutes. He had three primary questions. And I'll show you those questions in just a minute here. We had online surveys done with the pastors and the faculty and staff of the academy. And we did two separate interviews so we could compare data. There was a parent satisfaction and referral survey done by Grace Works for the academy earlier this year. Been online comments coming in via the conference website. We've looked at a lot of financial reports, lots of numbers, looked at the GCAS or General Conference Auditing Service reports, and we explored the enrollment trends. As Ham Canosa met with the faculty, three questions that he posed to them. "What are the root causes that brought MVA to this crisis? What immediate steps need to be taken to address the current situation? And what do you envision as the path forward for a more healthy and vibrant academy?" Some of the faculty, he was able to use all, get through all three questions, but most, many of the faculty members were very open and just started talking about the current school year, the last school year, sometimes looking back over the last four or five years. So there was a lot of very valuable information shared from the faculty. And I do want to state that all the information that we gather from these surveys is extremely confidential. There's nothing related to anyone's names. The only names that can be with any information, obviously, would be the face-to-face individual interview with Ham Canosa, but no names were shared with the group. These online surveys, there's no labeling of answers to individuals. So we've been able to separate the information from the individuals. The survey with the pastors and staff, as I stated, we separated them into two different ones. We had 16, 16 or 17 staff and faculty of the academy that answered questions, which was just about everyone. And we had 32 of the pastors and administration there. The three, actually, there were, there were eight questions. And there's only a few questions that were objective answers, like yes or no, or give a rating. Most of the answers provided for us were totally subjective. So there was really no, we might want to get, just a minute. But the first question, identify opportunity, top answer. And we looked at the top answers across the board, compared number one answer with number one answers from the pastors and on down through those top five. Second question was to identify three to five strategies in the academy towards a more viable future. And the third question, what is your single most important step that MVA can do for the short term to restore its appeal? All of those questions, totally subjective. Here's an objective question, rate the following. First one was, "Close after the current school year, close after current semester, or regroup for the, for the future?" I have two columns there. The first column would be the percentage that relates to the pastors. The second column is the staff. So you can see, closing after the current school year, 42% of the pastors said, "Closed after the current school year." Add that with current semester, you're at, what, 60% as compared to 24% for the faculty. Regrouping for the future, obviously, there's great interest, significant interest with the faculty to move forward. Couple more objective questions. Should the campus relocate? Forty-six percent of pastors said yes. Thirty-three percent of staff said yes. Majority in both situations. Pastors, 56% of the faculty. And here's a question where they rated, and that is, "How likely is it that you would recommend MVA to a friend?" And on a scale of one to 10, one being not at all, 10, you can see that 67% of the pastors, 63% of the staff are in that zero to 6% range. Then in the seven to eight, you had 27% of the pastors, 3% of the staff. And the nine to 10, 6%, 3%, which probably means one pastor and one faculty person. Some very interesting numbers that the pastors and the staff, the faculty, do not have that favorable impression, that they feel comfortable in recommending it. The last question was very simple. Additional comments, and that field could be as long as they wanted to type. And we had some answers that were as long as a half a page of typed information. Surveys were done through Survey Monkey, and all of that data is locked in there. Nothing can be changed. Once it's submitted, even the person who answered the survey can't go back and change their numbers. Nobody can edit any of the information. It just comes to us unidentified as to who supplied that information. Our job then became to collect all of this data and start looking at what are the common threads? What are the common denominators running through all of this? Interesting that there was very, very common in those, couple of those, there's some very... We identified this into six categories. The academy and the campus church regarding the attitudes of the students, the attitudes of students to the faculty. Lots of concerns there. Campus life, definitely lots of issues and questions, concerns going on there. Lot of comments with regards to enrollment, current and trends, and a number of comments about the change in our society and the declining interest in sending children away to boarding schools. Academics, a lot of questions there. And we've seen some numbers with regards to DFI list, which I understand is something that is calculated each week, but sometimes there seems to be, there can be a significant number of students that are on the DFI list, meaning DF or incomplete. Lots of comments, not favorably, with regards to leadership, with regards to the staff, the interaction of them. And certainly lots of concern about the financial situation of the academy with regards to operating. No capital reserves, the, the, the infrastructure, all you have to do is drive onto the campus and dodge the potholes. And you need, you know, there's a lot of work that needs to be done there. So these were the, the main areas. As we connected the dots, I'm, I'm not listing any of the comments, but the, the comments supplied this for us. To give you a little more breakdown, as we summed up some of the comments with regards to spiritual, as I mentioned, the relationship with the Hill Church is in desperate need of some reinvigoration going on there. Lots of, lots of people wrote, "We need a chaplain." Comments with regards to the impact of the international students, campus life. MVA needs to redefine its mission, its vision, in order to determine its true purpose. MVA needs a clearly defined and wholly embraced set of operational values, goals, and objectives. Administrative and instructional core needs to be reset. A campus-within-campus environment for international students. And that definitely brings a different dynamic to the campus. Enrollment. We have a number of statistics here. And I'm going to turn this over to Jerry Chase to walk us through.
I'll do the first few.
Okay, I'll do the first few. In the meeting of the day, Ham Canosa was with this. So some of these slides are his. And this one's not showing up correct on here like it did the other day.
The yellow percentage.
Yes, right. The yellow percentage there, 26%. Only 26% of Adventist households in North America have school-aged children. Very alarming number. It's a declining number. And the numbers that we're sharing with you here is not to say that things won't be different as we project out, but look at these numbers and look at the trend. This is more to share trends with us to try to get some perspective for the future. What's really interesting about this chart, this one's showing from K through 12. And you can see, we start out at a pretty healthy level in kindergarten and gradually increasing. And then we get out there to the eighth grade and something happens as, and this is for North America. We're not looking at the academy right now. We're looking at North America in general. There's a significant decline there. We're losing the students in secondary education when it drops off from eighth grade to ninth grade and continues to go down from there. If we look at the, the last 10 years, there's a 22% drop in enrollment in North America. And there's a value, you remember that number? Yes, the opening enrollment number back in '06, '07 was...
167.
167, 168, and down to 85 currently. So the trend for the academy certainly matches the numbers that we see within North American Division. Now, these are Jerry's numbers. Jerry has worked really hard at collecting data. And I said the other day, I think he went knocking door to door trying to find students for us.
This, this is a collection of opening reports for the 11 years. And the numbers for the Spring Valley Academy area have been excluded. So it does not include the numbers for Picquah or Cincinnati or Spring Valley Academy. I know it's a lot of numbers. And I joked before that it's death by numbers. But the way it's organized, the K through 12 enrollments listed by years.
Should we go with this?
Yes, on.
Let's do this so he can turn and look.
Testing. Yeah, good. Thanks. So of interest for us right now is the eighth graders and the ninth graders. And there's a potential relationship with high-year and the ninth graders the next year. And so that was what we call a cohort. This is a class that travels through the educational system. And you'll notice that for a while, the trend is that there were a certain number of eighth graders one year and the actual number of ninth graders the following year in Mount Vernon Academy was greater. And so go 35 to 45, 38 to 53.
Is that the time we had a huge amounts of money for a college?
Yeah, and there's, there's, you know, why would it, why would that be? And that was a time period where there was some scholarship money that was available that helped a great number of students to attend. I think something like scholarships for 10 students in each grade level. And so that kind of worked its way through the system. Then it became flat. And so the last one, two, three, four, five, six years, you notice that the number of eighth graders that actually ended up in ninth grade, the number of kindergarteners. And that number is incredibly steady. All right? And if you follow diagonally like this, that is what we call a cohort. Color coded this. I don't know, the colors don't really pop. Got to academy, that cohort was down to 17. So I hope, as constituents of this conference, that you realize that our educational system is an entire system. And it has to work together. And I asked the assistants of a professor at Andrews University, J.R. Thayer, who's taught statistics in the educational department. And I said, "Would you look at this and give me an idea what's going on here? And could you do a statistical analysis?" And he looked at it for a moment. He says, "Well, there's no statistic correlation between any of this." He said, "This is not a demographic problem. This is a systemic problem," meaning that there's a lot of different issues that are going on here. So one of the questions is, can we look at these numbers and suggest some possible trends? What does this imply as far as potential student pool? Now, there's a number of assumptions that were exercised in suggesting these numbers. And they're assumptions. They're not reality. Okay? But you have to base a projection on something. And so the projection is based simply on how many students are there in eighth grade. And we'll just move that number down here. Now, we know that students come from different places. They don't all come from the Ohio Conference, but we're looking at potential pool. This is instructive in that regard. So for the coming school year, the freshman class, based on this projection, would be 13 students. It could be less. It could be more. But if we were able to enroll every single eighth grader that's in the Ohio Conference educational system into Mount Vernon, it would be 13. Following year, it would be 14. And then if we take the sixth graders that are there now and move them all the way down... And then if we take the sixth graders that are there now and move them all the way down, it would be 25, 28, 36. Now, that's a kind of a... If you look at sixth graders, seventh graders, eighth graders, and you follow this down here, you notice that these numbers keep falling. So that's a bit of a stretch of an assumption, but it's the assumption that's been made, all right? Now, the impact is for next school year, if these numbers all held true, you move 12 here down, 24 down there, 28 there, is that you'd end up with 77. The next year, you have 14, 13, 12, 24, for a total of 63. The next year, 25, 14, 13, 12, for a total of 64. And the next year, 28, 25, 14, 13, for a total of 80. And it would take to 2019 to 2020 to reach about 100. There's two points that I want us to take away from this. One is how many kindergarteners we have consistently. And then to look at the impact over years of our upper rates, seventh and eighth, and then what happens when we hit academy, all right? That's why Dr. Thayer said there's a systemic issue going on here. Whenever we get into a group like this, one of the statements that happens first is Adventist families need to be taught to value Christian education like they used to. The statistics are that as many Adventist students are in Adventist education now as they were in our so-called heydays. In fact, the percentage of Adventist students in Adventist education has gone up a bit, a percentage or two. But we have fewer students, okay? Thank you.
Just a couple of slides here that sum up what he was saying there. Overall, 9, 12 enrollment across NAD is in a steady decline. Private education enrollment across the USA is in a decline. 11 percent down to 9 percent. We talked about the need for focus groups to look at all these different issues. The connection of elementary schools and students, high school-age students connecting with churches, connecting with alumni. There's a lot of work that needs to be done to really make this a very viable operation. From the academics' perspective, reinvigorate the academics that are being offered so they are better prepared for the future. Find ways to significantly cut the number of students that are on the DFI list. Explore different modes of delivery, be it distance education. Ways for the students to take advantage of other education opportunities and do some sharing that way. Leadership and staff, a lot of comments there. And we feel it's better to allow the reviews of employee performance be handled more by the personnel committee. Financially, from the operating side, MBA is in a very desperate need of money. Their financial stability actually doesn't exist. It cannot continue to heavily discount tuition and fees in order to enhance the enrollment. And it must significantly improve its collection of student accounts. And it must review its dependence upon the monies from international students. And I want to talk just a little bit more about this, especially the third bullet point on there, and that being the accounts receivable. And that has been quite a problem looking back over the last four or five years. And when you look at the financial statements, you do see that there's been a growing debt. And a good portion of that attributable to the lack of collection from students. And I know in this last year, there was more of a focus on enrollment numbers, knowing full well that at least five of those students that were enrolled had no ability to pay anything. There's some Ed Choice students that went and get $5,000 a year. And when you're looking at, depending on which numbers you use, it could be somewhere around $19,000 to $20,000 per student. And you have some that aren't paying anything, and you have some that only $5,000 is being collected. But your budget is projected on 100 percent collection. The numbers really get skewed, really get distorted. So this trend really, what's been happening financially in the academy is something that's been going on for some time and really needs to be addressed. The infrastructure, I already mentioned that. A lot of numbers there, let's see if I can see them better over here. Current school year, 85 students, this is the budget. And if we take the... Where's the pointer button on here? If we look at the current school year of 85 students, all the expenses itemized over here comes to 2.8 million. The largest one being salary of $857,000, coming down to healthcare expense, $135,000, other worker-related expense, $84,000. Obviously, well over a million dollars of this number is for staff. And a lot of them, then the other typical expenses, whether it's postage, or printing, or cafeteria. Cafeteria budgeted $260,000, vehicles, $30,000, utilities, $179,000. Retirement plan payments, $125,000, which really would be related to salaries and staff. And this number does not include any depreciation. If we fund depreciation and turn $86,000, then you've got a number over $3 million. That's the cost for a year to operate the academy. But then there are, then as the numbers are calculated for the students, then you've got subsidy from the conference, there's different things that get added in, gets subtracted with the work-student program. And then the international students, there's a larger amount that comes from them. So some things balance out, shift around some. This slide is the easiest one to make, the financial capital of the academy. And I want to stop here and state that this is probably the most important question that we have to answer. And I posed this question to both the Board of Trustees and to the Executive Committee the other day. The most important question that we have to answer, and you as constituents, you as concerned members regarding Mount Vernon Academy, and that question is, what is our mission? Is our mission Adventist education for our kids, Ohio Conference, perhaps some neighboring conferences? Or are we trying to keep a school open? No, I don't have that in here. Out of the 85 students that are currently enrolled, 36 are from the Ohio Conference. So as we move into the conclusions of the Blue Ribbon Committee, it really becomes a three-legged stool. There's three main parts. And all three parts are vital to the operation of the academy. Leadership, enrollment, and financial. And we've got to have all three. Imagine if we had all the money in the world, but we didn't have any students. Can't, there's really nothing to operate then. Or we had enrollment numbers far greater than what we saw out there, but there was little or no money. Then on the other side, there of leadership. If we, we've got to have really good synergy happening within the leadership, to the staff, to the faculty, to the students, to the Hill Church. All of this needs to be working together really well to make this a very viable, marketable academy. And I think we can... The academy really has lost its marketability. The next slide I just added today, I was in a meeting earlier today. And this quote was shared by Stephen Covey, and I thought this was really appropriate. "You cannot talk your way out of problems you have behaved your way into." You can't talk your way out of, you have to behave your way out of it. We've got to do some major behavioral changes on the academy. There has to be some attitude changes. We can't just sit around and talk about what's going to happen. There has to be some actions to make this all a viable campus. We took our recommendations into two categories, what not to do and what to do. We look at what not to do, we identified that not to do business as usual. We can't continue the way it's been. We can't continue ignoring collections. We can't continue ignoring the different relationships and attitudes on the campus. Doing nothing is not an option. The Blue Ribbon Committee doesn't feel that it's the right thing to do to sell assets to fund operating with other capital needs. And we do not, the Blue Ribbon Committee does not feel that we can't ignore addressing Adventist education for our kids. So what to do? This really now comes down to two parts, the short term and the long term. The short term is really the next 60 to 70 days. We have to address the immediate short term in order for there to be a long term. And you know, it's very easy in these discussions, in these meetings, to begin, to drift over to that long-term topic and talk about all the remodeling to do on the campus, and perhaps moving to the other side of the Hill Church, just lots of ideas. But all of that is long-term. We are facing a very short-term crisis, a significant crisis that has to be addressed now. And that is, the academy is out of money, and the Ohio Conference office right across the street is not in a position to bail out the academy again. Now, with the part we're talking about, if I was to back up to that slide about what is our mission, in both the Board and the Executive Committee, the answer really is Adventist education for our kids. Then comments come, but nobody wants to contribute money to pay off debt. Well, you know, a good portion of the debt number that we're looking at now, yes, $500,000 to $600,000 is something that has accumulated over the last four, five, six years. But there's a $700,000 shortfall for this year that is making a part of that debt. So call it whatever you want to, the short-term monies that are needed, yes, it's for operation because there was just recently, the conference secured a $700,000 line of credit for operating of the academy. So contributions, donations to the academy, yes, they will be going back to pay off a line of credit, but that line of credit is very current for operating. Significant measures are needed by the Board of Trustees, the alumni, the Executive Committee, and each of us as constituents of the Ohio Conference. So the short-term measures needed to secure the long-term of the academy, these were the items identified by the Blue Ribbon Committee. Needs some significant changes, perhaps even drastic changes in leadership and staff changes. The academy really needs to be out of debt, and that's kind of a moving number, 1.5 million. The Blue Ribbon Committee recommended building up and accumulating some capital reserves to have $3 million on hand by June 1, and with plans and pledges for infrastructure. And the debt issue being a number that needs to be addressed within 30 to 45 days after the January 11 constituency. So what you, the slide you see here are the recommendations from the Blue Ribbon Committee that first went to the Board of Trustees. So I'll share with you their motion. And that'll be coming up here in a minute. So the long term, when we address the long-term side, we satisfied the short term. Now we can focus on the long term, and that's where we need a new vision. A redo of the campus in all these different areas, a redo of the spiritual life, a redo of leadership and staffing and campus life and academics. All of this really needs to be turned around to make an academy that is very viable, very marketable. We also talked about alternatives. And maybe it's time for some economy of scale where we can still provide secondary Adventist education through scholarships with distance education. Again, these are long-term discussions that we can have if we solve the short-term need. If we don't solve the short-term situation, then there probably isn't much reason to talk about a lot of the long-term issues. We didn't get here overnight. It's been a number of years, go back to a number of years, five, six years ago, when we had the IRS issue of the penalties and fines that we were able to negotiate down from over $180,000 down to $90,000. But we didn't get here overnight, but the challenge is we have to fix it overnight. So here's the motion, the action recommended to the Ohio Executive Committee on Tuesday by the Board of Trustees from Monday. Whereas the Board of Trustees for MBA believes in the value of secondary Adventist education, whereas the BOT recognizes that MBA is in debt and has no working capital, whereas the BOT recognizes the needs of the campus, i.e. restructuring and improvements, whereas the BOT recognizes there are assets that can be sold, whereas the BOT will demonstrate their commitment to the ministry of MBA through 100 percent participation and leadership given. To assure the long-term operation of MBA, the BOT recommends the following. For the short term, raise $1.5 million by February 15, and have six months of working capital in place by April 1 of 2015. Explore the sale of assets. And the Board of Trustees will select a committee to write a new vision statement and action plans for the long term that addresses the challenges identified by the Blue Ribbon Committee, that being spiritual climate, campus life, leadership and staff, academics, and finances should be on there too. So that was the action taken by the Board of Trustees Monday evening. Tuesday, a more detailed... Tuesday, a more detailed presentation than what you're seeing here this evening was shared with the Executive Committee. And then time was spent with this action that was recommended to the Executive Committee. And here's how the Executive Committee addressed the action received from the Board of Trustees. Whereas XCOM, the Executive Committee, has received the findings and recommendations presented by the Blue Ribbon Committee, and whereas XCOM places great value on providing long-term Adventist secondary education for the constituents of the Ohio Conference, XCOM recommends accepting the BOT with the following changes and additions to its benchmarks. Raising one-point-five-million by February ten, and the previous one said February fifteen. This one says raise one-point-five-million by March ten, which is really that operating capital number, working policy requires six months.
Thank you, because of him maybe share with him why it was moved back from April one to June.
And, and these dates, these dates are very significant because of when teacher contracts are signed. And if, what, if there's going to be some change made, you can't wait until June one or April one, because to sign contracts for current staff or to hire other teachers, other staff, the April one date is just too far out. So we tried to shorten this up. We, we have such a, a short timeframe for all of this to happen, so we're really, this is all really crunched together. Any sale of real estate assets restricted to debt reduction and capital improvements and not current operations. And then a couple other points that were added, the Executive Committee felt we need to address, okay, we established these benchmarks, all right? If we, so if we meet the benchmarks for the short term, what next? In the event these benchmarks are met, XCOM recommends the following. Develop long-term vision and action plans by March fifteen that will provide steps and strategies for a sustainable future of the academy, encompassing the three core components of leadership, enrollment, and finances as identified by the VRC. And XCOM Personnel Committee will conduct an assessment of current administration and faculty and make necessary recommendations regarding continued employment or change. So if the short term here is met, these benchmarks are met, then here becomes the, the long term. In the event the benchmarks are not met by this date of March ten, then XCOM recommends the following. MBA and its BOT will immediately begin the process necessary to cease operation of the academy by the end of the 2014-15 school year. XCOM will develop alternative options for secondary education for current and future Ohio Conference students, including funding options and scholarships. That would be the end of my...
I'd like to invite Lyle Letzenberger up here, and as he comes, I want to introduce to you, if you haven't met him yet, he's our interim treasurer for the conference. And he's been the conference treasurer here before in the past. When GCAS wanted to have us be ready as an academy for the audit, they told me the best person to get would be Lyle Letzenberger. He has just helped Wisconsin Academy, I believe. And he came and joined the crew at the academy, and they were ready for that audit. And he's learned a great deal about it. Well, he's also a missionary because he's come on for a year as interim treasurer as winter has started, and he lives in Altamont Springs, Florida. And his wife is a real missionary because she came with him, and they're staying in a luxurious apartment in the girls dorm. So I thank him for that dedication. It's helpful, not only because of his history with us, but having worked preparing for the audit, he also has a great grasp of the situation at our academy, financially speaking. You're going to share with us about the conference finances.
It's good to be back here in Ohio. We certainly enjoyed our time here. And I would like to endeavor to address the statement that Vince made in that the conference isn't currently able to help the academy out of the financial problems it is in. It has done that in the past, but right now, because of the situation, we are unable to. And I'd also, since I've only been here four weeks, I'm thankful for Andy Sutton and Jerry Chase helping me put this, these slides together. The first slide I'd like to show is the tide expenditures that we have. Thirty-seven percent of the tide that we receive from you as church members goes to the higher organizations, the North American Division and the World Field, the General Conference. Thirty-four percent of that tide is used for the pastors' salaries and expenses. And then twenty-nine percent is used for other things in the conference, such as administration is eight percent, education fourteen percent, church ministries five percent, and Camp Mo Haven two percent. So that is the way that the tide is used that comes into the conference. Now, looking at how Ohio uses its sixty percent. Fifty-three-point-four percent goes to the pastors, two-point-seven to Camp Mo Haven, church ministries is eight percent, education is sixteen-and-a-half percent, MBA, SVA six percent, and administration, and doesn't have a percentage there for that. But that shows you how we divide the tide dollar within the conference. This is what has happened to the investment income in the conference since 2006 to 2013. You'll see how the income from investments has drastically declined from about a hundred, probably seventy-five thousand, it jumped up a little bit in 2007 to close to a hundred-and-eighty, a hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, and is now down less than fifty thousand in 2013. That's because we no longer have the money in investments earning that income. The next is the balance sheet net asset trends. And you might ask, well, what are net assets? That is the current, the assets on the balance sheet minus the liabilities. So that's what we have available for operations. Again, in 2006, that was up close to five million dollars, and 2013, that is down below two million, probably about one million seven-hundred-and-fifty to, or one million eight-hundred-thousand as we look at that. So you can see that the financial position of the conference over this period of time has drastically decreased. As we look at the working capital, back in 2006, we had a hundred-and-sixty percent of the required working capital, and the North, uh, North American Division indicates that a conference or a school should have a hundred percent working capital. Currently, our percentage of working capital has dropped down to forty-two-point-seven percent at the end of 2013. So that was a drastic decline over those years. As we look at our income and expense comparisons, in 2010, and the red is the income, the blue is the expenses, we had more income than expenses. But in each of the years thereafter, our expenses have exceeded our income. So that means we've ended each year at a financial loss in operations. Now, this is one I think is interesting because it shows that basically our salaries have been flat, thirty-one to thirty-two percent for those years. So it isn't because we've increased salaries that we've had this decline.